So hi, I'm Kendall.
Hi Kendall.
As you know, I'm from Kids Voting Durham, so thank you for taking the time to join us here today. So we wanted to follow up with you on your answers from our 2019 candidate questionnaire, now that you've been in office for about two years. And we just plan to share your responses with like the rest of the community. So to get started, you previously said that you wanted to run for office in order to increase affordable housing, make the community safer and better the economy. So are these still your main goals and what steps have you taken to accomplish this?
Yeah, so those, well, I would say that yes, and also COVID. So I think that 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 reality has shifted a lot of what I have personally been working in this past year. But as far as the main targets of, you know, community safety, affordable housing, and you know, improved economic outcomes for our residents are still really, really important to me. As far as affordable housing, one of the big things that I championed when I ran and was very much supported by Durham residents, city residents, was the Affordable Housing Bond. And so we have just finalized, if I'm not mistaken, the kind of group that we appointed to help us implement that. The residents who are going to help us track and monitor our success around our affordable housing goals. And then with community safety, one of the big things that I'm super excited about is this new department, which will be the Department of Community Safety and Wellness, that is living outside of our police department. Again, this is a it will, so there's a city department and then adjacent to that is a commissioner board that is made up from, you know, both the county, the city, and the school system appointed members to that. And so those residents are going to help us determine what are the alternative ways that we can do safety without, you know, just the traditional response of police. So that's kind of how that work has unfolded. And then the kind of economic pieces are often in some ways harder, especially because of what's happening with COVID. And I'm not sure how much folks have paid attention, but the city did stand up a kind of small business relief fund last year with also the county and Duke. So that's kind of how we responded to that need in that moment. The money we will be receiving from the big package passed at the federal level is really going to be a game changer for us. As far as the amount of money the city is getting, and it's really just a it's a seismic shift from where we were when I was first, you know, appointed in 2018 and then ran and won in 2019. It was very much a kind of we're doing this on our own as a city, regardless of what was happening at the state and federal government. And sometimes often it was harder because we didn't have the support we needed at those higher levels of government. And so we're really limited in the kind of universe or kind of landscape we could really operate in. I would still say that in many ways, the state government is hostile to what Durham residents really want from their government. But it has been a game changer at the federal level and I'm excited. You know, the last year until the election in November, it was quite frankly really scary. And there was definitely a kind of feeling that we're we're navigating something as a community. And as an elected leader, definitely felt like, okay, we're on our own and how are we gonna, how are we gonna do this?
Thank you so much for your answer. You kind of touched on this earlier, but in regards to the Affordable Housing Bond, can you tell us a little bit more about the implementation? And is there any way that you would like want to expand upon it in increasing affordable housing for Durham residents?
Yeah, so and I'm happy to share resources. So we just got a big update last week at our work session from our community development department. And that was the department that oversees our affordable housing strategies in the city. So happy to share that with you because it was a really excellent kind of update on where we are. So some of the work there is the nice thing about the Affordable Housing Bond is 95 million is our money, but it's really, I think, 160 million total. When we take into account the kind of tax credits that we're going to apply for through the federal government and some of these other places that we will be getting resources from. So it is really, really large. Is it enough? No. I think what we're seeing, and this is something that I'm paying really close attention to, and you all may hear about it, I'm not sure as far as like what do kids, you know, what filters down to to like under 18, under 20 year old, you know, I don't think y'all are trying to buy a house yet, right? So you're maybe not paying attention to this as closely, but the housing market in Durham is really, really intense and that's happening all over the country. But when we have folks who are moving from housing markets that were a lot more expensive, and maybe they had real estate in those markets and then they sold it. And then they're coming to a place like Durham or Raleigh or whatever. They have a lot more money than the folks that are here trying to find a house, right? Or even rent. And so it has created a really what you would call like a hot market and it's, and it's going to, I think, get worse. And so some of the things that we have to do is increase just our housing inventory across the board. Doesn't, not just what we dedicate as a city with our own public dollars around affordable housing. Like, you know, that's, there's a prescription to it. It's prescribed because of the area median income that we are targeting for that housing. So that's one thing that, you know, is really, really important. We have to help figure out housing for all levels of income folks in Durham, not just the folks who need affordable housing because in general, if if you, if you don't have enough of, you know, if there's not enough supply, right? It just puts the pressure and so then the folks who can afford it the least are the ones who are hurt the most.
Wow, that's, that's definitely really interesting. So to keep going, as for public transit, you said that you wanted to help develop plans for buses and commuter trains to help students get to wherever they need to go. And so obviously due to COVID, this must have like changed a lot of plans. So do you still plan to work on this like after the pandemic? Or have you made like new changes to accommodate for it?
Yeah, so we're in the, and so the city is an interesting place because while we do transportation and we have a transportation department and Go Durham is some, you know, the part of the kind of transit that we really help fund. You know, it's a, it's a county collected transit tax. So they're the ones who hold that money. And so the work that the city does is kind of in adjacent spaces and not in direct oversight. They are in the middle of their transit plan update. And some of the differences between then and now is that I, as a city council member, have been appointed to some of these transit and planning related boards. We all get assignments from the mayor, unlike, you know, you're kind of said, you know, you're going to sit on this board and you get your assignments. And so one of mine recently changed to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And it's like the planning between Orange and Durham. And the state is divided into certain regions and that's our region. And so in fact, today I heard the updated transit plan. So they're going to be entering their part of the community engagement component of it to hear from residents what's really, really needed. The two things that I know I want is I want improved bus service. My kids are, I have one kid at Riverside and a second kid going to Riverside. And we mapped the route to try and take a city bus to Riverside and it would take forever. So we need improved bus routes and that are local and consistent and reliable. And we also need transit that is like regional so that you can connect. Because we all know that folks in Durham don't just stay in Durham. They go to Raleigh, they go to Wake County, they go to Orange or Chapel Hill. And so we need transit that can meet that need as well. And that's really, really expensive, quite frankly. That is an expensive thing to try and do both. I am very curious and hopeful about this massive infrastructure bill that the federal government is trying to get passed. And that also may be a game changer for how we're able to do transit in this area. But in general, yeah, the commitment to having, you know, I think that high school students should be on our city buses. I think it would be the way that the city could really help our, you know, the city doesn't really do anything with education as far as like direct funding. And I think that this is a really good way that we could help because it would alleviate the burden of transportation for Durham Public Schools. If there was a whole section of the student population that doesn't rely on school buses for their transportation to and from school.
Yes, that definitely makes a lot of sense. So in regards to policing, you supported creating alternatives to the police force such as violence interpreter programs and first responders trained to specifically handle mental health related situations. Is this something that, you know, you still support? And has there been any progress made on getting these initiatives into place?
Yeah, actually, we are expanding the capacity of, it's called Full City United and their like Violence Interrupter Program that the county already had. And we just approved funding to expand their capacity. Additionally, we are creating an entire department around community and safety wellness. And we recently were in the middle of, so they, they did a 911 call analysis. That's something that the city just finished doing because you kind of need to understand how are folks interacting? You know, what are, what are the calls for service like right now? You know, you can think that, oh, we need, maybe we need this support in the community or that support in the community. But we wanted to be really intentional and methodical. So that study wrapped up and we were provided a lot of information, really interesting information. So and with our 911 call information, a lot of our phone calls are around traffic, like traffic stops, traffic wrecks, small traffic infractions. And so there's some questions around, well, does an armed police officer really need to address that issue? Or could it be handled by a different type of employee? Another thing that was really illuminating in that call data was that there's a lot of calls around people's home alarms, but they're false. They're not because somebody, you know, it's a false alarm or it wasn't, there was no incident of, of like the police needed to be there necessarily. So over, I feel like it was from 2017 through 2020, they analyzed it. And so thousands and thousands of these calls came through around people's home alarms. The instant, you know, it gets triggered, the police get called. And in only one circumstance was there an arrest needed. And so when you think about the cost to all of us to have a 911 response in that way, is that really the resource that we need to send is an armed police officer? My guess is we could probably figure something else out. So that's the state that we're in right now. So we're going to be running some pilot programs currently, like now. They're going to kind of come to us and share some, you know, several, not just one or two. And then the idea is out of those pilots, which ones are the most successful to keep, you know, fully provide funding for. One of the things that was also suggested is this idea of a different response at dispatch. So when you call 911 right now, the chances are it will be a police officer who arrives at your home or your work regardless of what's happening and if that's the best response. And so there's a concept that maybe it's not that police officer that needs to show up. It's a nurse or a social worker. And so then how do you implement something like that? So that's where we are with community and safety. That's actually the area that I'm really honestly the most excited about because it really is a very different than what we've seen. We spend $70 million a year on our police department. And based on what we see with our resident surveys and what other resident feedback we get, I think a lot of folks are interested, a lot of residents are interested in, is that the best use of, of public money? And is there a better way to use that public money?
It sounds like those changes could become really impactful once they can be put into place. So to continue with the police department, in the questionnaire, you stated that you don't support DPD working with immigration enforcement. Is this something that you still believe?
Absolutely. And thankfully, our DPD does not work with immigration. And I would say that just the, while there's still a ton of work to do within this type of work within immigration, it is, it is really, really, we're in a different era right now. And I certainly, you know, at the moment and at the, at the time, you didn't think you were ever going to get through it, right? 2019 seemed like a it was a really dark time for a lot of folks. And that were, and you know, even with COVID that we've seen such, you know, such really just a different ecosystem out there around immigration is, it leaves you a little bit hopeful and I certainly wasn't sure if I was going to see that, you know, depending on what happened with the 2020 election.
Definitely. So do you think that there has been improvement in regards to racial and ethnic discrimination within Durham's police force? And have any steps been taken to push for more improvement with that?
I think that, you know, this past summer was a pretty big indicator of how police, police in Durham and what the standard and expectation is. We did not have what many other communities saw across this country. And I think it's because, and I was in those streets, so I can personally attest to what I saw, which is that there was a probably a police presence very much at a distance, probably making sure that things were staying safe. But they gave protesters a lot of space and a lot of room and were very non-confrontational. And I think we got different outcomes because of it. I think people were really, really, and we're seeing it right now again in Minnesota, right? People are angry and, you know, they need to be given that space to be, to have, to show grief. And I don't think we're done in Durham by any means on this kind of arc around like, what are we going to do about policing? But I think we're operating in a much different and better place.
Thank you for that. So our last topic is about increasing employment for Durham's younger population. You talked about Youth Works, which was a summer youth intern program. Can you tell us a little bit more about how that program is like currently doing?
Yeah, that's a great question. And in fact, I just got an update about this. I think we increased our funding by quite a bit. You know, I'm not sure how, you know, we have a new city manager. I don't know how much you all paid attention to, that was, that just happened. And our current city manager, I think, increased it. We are putting $550,000 into Youth Works, which is a, which is a good investment. Again, probably not enough, right? But certainly, I think, a kind of a, you know, a stake in the ground about what we believe in. And, you know, again, you know, where are you going to put your resources? I remind folks all the time, you know, we are, we can only increase our kind of allocation, our, our money as a city by increasing property taxes. Really, that's one of the only mechanisms we have. And so that, that does put a burden on, on our residents though, especially those who are struggling if they have to pay higher property taxes. So it's always this tension. So to me, the thing that you can do is to really look at what you're, what you have and if it's allocated to the beliefs that you're putting out and what, you know, what we say we want our city to be as elected leaders and that what we hear back from residents about what they want.
So in regards to this feedback, you mentioned a youth listening project to allow for new ideas and suggestions. Can you tell us a little bit more about this and has it been implemented in any way?
Yeah, so the Youth Listening Project Report came out a little while ago. I think maybe February it was released. And that, that's where that is right now. I know that our Office on Youth is something that a lot of folks appreciate and is seen as like a lead on a lot of how do we involve youth. Again, I'm happy to share that report with you all unless, are any of you all on our, our youth advisory board? Michelle or Kendall or either one of you on our youth advisory board? Okay. I'm looking for, I saw this. Here's the, the link. Here's the link to Youth Works for the summer. And here's the report. And it's also in Spanish. I'm just putting the English one in here.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And in case you all want it, here is the Spanish.
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
So to continue on, you also spoke in support of making it easier for younger residents to start their own businesses. What steps have you taken in regards to this?
I think right now the focus has been ensuring the businesses that are here are not failing. We know that there will be a lot of other resources that are coming into Durham. I think that our local, especially when I think about retail and restaurants, really took a hit. I think we're in a really hard spot in general around that. And it's kind of unclear to me as to, you know, what's happening? Where is it, you know, what's going to happen over the summer as folks get vaccinated? We as a city have not gotten, we know federal money is coming, but we don't know all of the strings attached to necessarily some of those things. So the city had been with the Office of Economic and Workforce Development. It was our Built to Last program. And that kind of got shifted quite a bit in response to COVID. As far as my personal commitment, I think that, you know, this connection between our school system, Durham Tech, the kinds of jobs we are getting, that whole kind of alignment and connection needs to improve so that folks feel like they can stay here because this is becoming an expensive place to live. Interestingly, COVID has brought a lot of new jobs. The county does a lot more work around kind of incentives for new jobs. But we, we are definitely becoming a hotspot with kind of, you know, biotech, those, those types of fields. And you can make a good living if you have the right kind of credentials. And it doesn't necessarily mean a four-year degree. But are we doing the work around ensuring that our young residents, like you all know that, right? And that the right credentials are being offered at like, at something like Durham Tech. And if we don't really improve those connections, I am fearful about, you know, younger residents not being able to afford to stay.
So for our last question, I think it connects a little bit to what you were just talking about in regards to making a living. You said it was important to push for changes in state law in order to mandate a living wage that also matches inflation rates. I'm sure that like has a lot to do with COVID also, but have, are there any updates on this?
Well, our General Assembly did not change. Significantly to our benefit. And the $15 an hour, you know, that fell through at the federal level. Our commitment, you know, as a city has been to at least ensure that our employees make living wages. And what the effect that that does have that is positive is that it becomes a a pressure in the market elsewhere. So even for, even for part-time employees, and that's something that we did in 2019 with the 29 bud, 2019. I guess it was technically fiscal year 2020. You know, we've named the fiscal year for the year that's coming, even though we're only halfway through the calendar year. So it throws folks. So right now, we're talking about fiscal budget 22 because we'll pass it on in June. And it'll get, start to get implemented July 1 of 2021, but technically it's fiscal year 22. So one of those, one of that, one of the benefits of that is that it does create kind of wage pressure in the market in Durham in general. Because if you can come work for the city even as a lifeguard, right? And, and make a decent wage per hour, then the other places that are offering lifeguard jobs sometimes have to compete with that wage. So that's where that's useful as far as the city itself, not just for, you know, wanting to treat our workers well, but for helping improve the wages in Durham across the board. But we absolutely need a minimum $15 wage an hour across North Carolina. If we could do it just as City of Durham, we would. We are unfortunately can't. And and I think that by the time we get $15 an hour, I think it's going to be too low, right? Because it took so much time to get it. I'm interested in, I think minimum wages should match the cost of living where they are. I mean, it's great to have a floor, but in Durham, I don't think it's $15 an hour anymore. I think it's like 15, close to $16 an hour. And that's going to keep changing. And the city's equation, or the city's formula takes that into account. So ours increases every year because of that. It is adjusted. We don't have to go back and fix it as things get more expensive. It was built that way.
Yep, that was my last question, but thank you so much for your answers. And I'm sure that COVID has made such a big impact on how plans have been made. But yeah, I'm going to pass it on to Michelle now. She has a few more questions. But thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, how are you?
Hey, Michelle.
And I'll be taking over for questions about new issues. We think it'd be important to have answers. Our first question, we wanted to know is what does reparation mean to you? And how do you think the city should handle this issue in the coming two years?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question because it's something I actually wrestle with. Do I believe that reparations need to happen? Yes, that's not a question in my mind. It's just who actually could afford to do it the way it needs to be done. And I'm not sure the city could do it in a way that would be meaningfully, like meaningful economically to folks. If folks, if people were interested in doing a reparation study for the City of Durham, I would be interested in, in learning more about it. I personally believe that reparations needs to happen at the federal level.
Yeah, thank you for your answer. Then this question, you kind of hit on it, but what do you think the current mental health needs are? Especially with like the current pandemic, rising tensions and violence? And how does this impact city policy and the police department, seen in youth centers and other places?
Yeah, that's a good question. So mental health, you know, we, this past year has been really challenging for a lot of folks. It's something that I hear consistently. We ran some town halls this past year. It was a historic first in the City of Durham. We were able to run trilingual virtual town halls. We offered one in August and it was in English, Spanish and Swahili. And then the second one we did in February and it was English, Spanish and Arabic. And we're using the data like DPS helps us determine what kind of high, other high use languages. what kind of high, other high-use languages they see because it's a good reflection of what other high-use languages are in Durham that, and and folks who are not also bilingual, so they speak English is not their predominant language or a language they feel comfortable in. And that was something that was shared really clearly in that space is this need around mental health. I think that's one of the reasons that I'm really excited about the um both the Community Safety and Wellness Department and the task force that's a, that's, you know, resident-led to help guide us through a lot of these questions. You know, what does it actually mean to have a safe and healthy community? Uh and I think mental health is a big component of that.
Yeah, definitely. And I think it's really interesting that um and important that marginalized groups are needing the help they need to live in Durham. Um and our final question is about new shoes is more of what you consider is important. So what two to three issues do you think the city should prioritize in addressing while you complete the last two years of your current term?
Well, so right now, I think my one, number one issue, and this is gonna be, you know, probably next three to probably three months, hopefully, hopefully it's just three months, is vaccine equity. Uh right now, what we know is in Durham County, we are very much lagging behind uh within our Black and Latino and other immigrant group communities on uh access to, or just even having so they have access to the shot probably, but there's not necessarily the connection between knowing what to do and doing it, right? And it's and folks have some hesitation or just questions or just they're, folks are really unclear on where do I go get a shot? How do I do this? So I think that's something that is really, really important to me. Because if we can't get to herd immunity, we're just gonna keep seeing cycles of of um outbreaks and that really is damaging on so many levels for for Durham. And right now, I'm concerned about the variants that are quickly spreading. So that would probably be my number one thing for the, like, from now through the end of the summer. We just need to get our folks vaccinated. I need Pfizer to approve the shot for, you know, twelve and twelve to fifteen-year-olds so that we can have our kids go back to school, at least high school and and middle school in a, in a more normal way. Um I think for the next two years, but I put forward three um budget items, this for this budget that we're trying to approve in Ju- well, we have to approve by June thirtieth. That's that's our charge. So one is the Immigrant Legal Defense Fund, so providing free legal um immigration defense for residents in the city of Durham. The other is a Language Access Coordinator, and then the third is an Immigrant and Refugee Affairs Coordinator that would be jointly funded through the county. Um so making sure that those get funded are big priorities for me, if whatever doesn't get funded, ensuring that they get funded in the next year. And then I think the the work around the this kind of, what are we gonna do in Durham about policing? Uh those are probably the three big things. You know, I think about affordable housing, we need to keep doing what we are doing and expand it, but I feel really good about what we've started. Right? So it's like we're in this implementation phase. We have really good goals. We have a strong department. We have like a path forward. We need to do more, but at least you can see what the work is, right? With the policing work, I don't, I feel like there's a lot there that we need to investigate, and I think it can be transformative. And so that's probably the work that I am am the most kind of eager and excited about. Along with that, we have to think about, you know, we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan update, so zoning and planning, what is, what is the built drum gonna look like in the future? We know that transit is gonna be a big issue, um including, you know, bike lanes and better sidewalks and all those infrastructure needs though. So that that that's always there, right? Um and and also important.
Yeah, I think all those issues are really important, and it's comforting to know that they're being addressed. I'm pretty sure youths and residents are also comforted about knowing that these issues are addressed and acknowledged.
Yeah, we will, we will keep doing the best that we can. Uh even, you know, sometimes it it's hard, work, government work is really slow.
Um we want to end this interview with some fun questions, so feel free to answer any one of these. Have you learned during the pandemic? What's your biggest guilty pleasure or what's your favorite takeout spot in Durham?
Okay, what's the biggest thing I've learned? I've learned a lot about things I didn't think I was gonna learn about. So I've learned a lot about sidewalks and water systems and infrastructure. And um I turned forty the day after I was appointed on on council. Uh so twenty eighteen. And if somebody had said this is, this this is the stuff you're gonna learn at this point in your life, I would have been like, oh, that's that's an interesting thing to learn about, you know, planning and transit. I wouldn't have picked that. The second question, oh, guilty binge-watching something on on Netflix right now, especially with COVID. Um that's definitely a guilty pleasure. And then best takeout, um we like Wasaka a lot because I like Arepas a lot. That's one of my favorite. And then I think it's, I always flip it. I don't know if it's Lemon Lime or Lime Lemon, but it's the Indian place on Ninth Street. That's also one of my favorite places uh for takeout. Um those two are real popular in my house, so.
Those all sound really interesting. Is there anything else you would like to say?
No, just I really appreciate y'all um taking the time to interview us and I'm, I'm, we're doing a lot of stuff with our younger residents. I'm excited about it. I think that I have three kids and they're twelve to fifteen years old, and they are way more aware of the world than I was at their age. So I appreciate you all a lot.